We're working on that. So thanks again to all of our teachers. I also want to congratulate River View School. We did submit our Blue Ribbon application. It's a very extensive application. It's taken months to complete, but we did submit that today. So I'm very excited to see, we just now, we wait until August to find out if we will be awarded the Blue Ribbon status. I will also do a merit goal update and a goals update. So the goal that I was overseeing had to do with our students that were not meeting our benchmarks. And so we started the year, you know, the NJSLA has been canceled this year, so we aren't going to know exactly how the students did. So we have to use all of our data that we've been collecting in-house. But up to this point, we put so many things in place to get the students ready. And we really did, we created a data analysis plan for each building and put in several interventions. We redid the tiered systems of supports. We have, are recommending a new program for our math to be adopted, and that is on the agenda. So we have a variety of things we've been working on to increase our achievement in math. And so we'll have to wait till the end of the year. We will still do some concluding assessments, but we will not be able to use the NJSLA data to do the comparison as we have done in the past. Two of my updates on two of my merit goals, one of them was to increase our staff participation in the reflective practice protocols. So last year, we had thirty-six out of eighty-seven that were eligible, and that was forty-one percent participated. And this year, we had forty out of sixty-two, which was sixty-four point five percent participation. So we increased that. This goal number three was to increase parent involvement with our math program through our Math Matters initiative. And as of March eleventh, I had documented a hundred and two presentations. I know that some of the presentations haven't been logged yet, so I'm waiting to hear back from all the teachers to make sure. And the school came up with a fantastic idea to see if any of our parents who did not get the chance to do their presentation, maybe they'd want to do it virtually. So we're working that out to see if any more parents would like to continue. But at, as of March eleventh, we had thirty-nine presentations at Lakeview, thirty at River View, and thirteen at Valley View. So a total of a hundred and two. So we're very excited that we were able to really learn from so many of our parents. As far as kindergarten registration, we-
Okay, hold on one second, Sandy. Just pause the meeting for a minute. We're, just, there's a technical issue we're trying to deal with. Just hold on one minute.
Have kids had any physical? It's all been written? They've had nothing to do with online?
Sure.
All been signed?
Laura, I can see you're talking, but you're muted.
I could hear Mike. I couldn't hear Laura either.
I was muted. Thank you, Dave. Um, can you guys look up the link that I posted in the chat and see if that is different than the one that you used? The one that I posted is the one that went to the public, and when I was trying to get in originally, I couldn't get in.
The link, the link is, the link, the link is the same. Yeah, it took a minute, but it came up.
Alright. I don't know.
Yeah, the link appears identical from my end, too.
Okay.
I just typed in the chat. I just typed in the chat.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So Dave, is that, is that a bowling pin behind you?
Yeah, I'm actually at my mother-in-law's house. She's a big bowler. She's been doing, she's been running the River View PTA Bowling League for the last forty-something years.
Ah, but it's decorated, though.
Yeah, they did bowling pin decorations for prizes back in the day.
If you don't mind me asking publicly, how's she feeling? She just had a surgery.
Hey, everybody on this board, hold on. Dave, don't talk, alright? I had a question for Sandy, for Dr. Cullis. Hey, everybody, Board of Ed, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Please don't talk. Just be quiet for a minute.
Mr. Forte, can you guys just hold one second? Thank you.
I'm talking to you.
Oh, we're on-
Talking just to you.
Okay, we're on, okay, you're on this one. It looks like, um, I'm gonna put the link in the chat for those of you that are in this meeting where there's just a few people. Somehow, there was an incorrect meeting link, so I'm gonna paste in the correct meeting link so you can join the rest of us.
So this, so we're- Okay, board members, we're back. There was, there was an issue with the link, so we had to, we wanted, there was, it's complicated, but now it's straightened out. And I couldn't talk to both of you at the same time. Alright.
Do you want me to continue?
Yeah, you can continue. Thank you.
Okay. So, and then I was just doing an update on the kindergarten registration, and we had two more registrations this week, so we are now at one seventy-seven. This concludes the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Don here, I had a question.
Yes.
Do you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm, yes.
On the online learning, we're evolving, there are two questions. Currently, at least for the middle school, it looks like the phys ed being done is strictly written assignments and no, no physical activity. Is that gonna change, or is that the plan that the kids would can begin, you know, in school, they'd be doing some type of physical activity? And I know at home, with the sunny day, they could do something in the backyard with the phys ed teacher online. The weather's bad, but is that gonna change?
Well, I will look into that because as far as the flexible instruction day plan, they should be doing thirty minutes at home a day and logging it, so I will check on that at Valley View. Thank you. And I'll get back to you and get back to parents and make sure that that's happening.
Yeah, and I don't know about the, the elementary schools, if they're doing some type of activity there within there. And the other thing, I know we're evolving here, we wanna come from level with the teachers with this virtual learning. But, um, and I know there's a lot of moving parts to this, and we're getting news every day, but there's always the possibility that we probably go back to school in May and maybe not even June. So are we gonna evolve to a, a virtual classroom where they're gonna have a schedule similar to what they have now, when they get off the bus and go to school every day? Maybe the class will be shorter. But, um, so they have that routine, and the other issue with that is that, you know, a lot of parents have kids in various grades, so they're juggling a lot of balls with the, the class time. And I saw that on the FAQs that came out, that was a very nice job, all the questions there and, and the answers. So I know it's, it's a challenge, but it would appear that there's gonna be a need for, you know, replicating daily classroom activity, you know, four, four days a week, five days a week for the, for the kid, where they actually see the teacher can raise their hand and ask questions, and the teacher can talk back to them as they would in the classroom.
Yes. At this time, what we're doing this week is to try it out because we wanna see how many students are actually logging in at that time. When we did talk with parents, we had a mixed range. Like, some parents wanted it to be more flexible, and we do value the flexibility because we do realize that every family's in a different situation. So we're trying to value the flexibility as well as provide more interaction between teachers and students. But I know some of the teachers are videotaping a lesson every single day and putting it up so that students can access it at their own pace, and then are, in addition, just getting on once a week to answer questions and answer emails. So we're gonna play it out this week and get the feedback, and then make a plan and let parents know by Thursday of what it's going to look like for April twentieth for Valley View. So I've been in close contact with Mr. Corman, and we've been checking, you know, we're now counting percentages of every Google Classroom so we can see which is the best model and which one will reach the most students. And it probably will be a mix. I don't think at this time it will be a straight, full, you know, nine-period day or anything like that, but there may be, um, you know, a three-day rotating schedule. So we are working on that, but we're trying to meet all the needs of both those families who don't have the flexibility at home with the computer and those that want more contact with teachers. So we are-
Yeah, well, having some, yeah, having some type of archive as one of the options is great, great because a lot of parents are, have to work during the day. Some people still have jobs, and they're, they're working during the day. So it's hard to monitor the kids doing their stuff in the classroom as well as answering your, your career calls. So it's a very challenging situation. I thank you for that update. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. And you know, like I said, we, we, a lot of parents were out during the Google Classroom training that we did, so we were able to put a lot of those answers together because that is exactly the concern. We wanna make sure there's no overlap between classes where students have to choose between going to a math class over a science class. But we also wanna make, we may not be able to do a strict schedule because there's multiple students in the house. And like you said, the parents may, may or may not be there to help them with that. So we're trying to meet both needs. Thank you.
Um, so before we move on to the Business Administrators Report, I just wanted to comment on Dr. Cullis and Dr. Forte's reports that I personally, as many of the board members have kids, I have three kids doing virtual learning, and it's certainly a challenge. And I think that the teachers have been doing a fantastic job. Many of the teachers are already doing Google Meets, Google Hangouts, Zoom calls. So all the feedback that I've been getting from the public has been wonderful in addition to my own experience with the teachers. So congratulations to the administration as well as the staff for the great job that I think that everybody has been doing. And Dr., oh, Dr. Cullis, sorry. Dr. Forte, Damaris, are you ready for the Business Administrators Report?
Just one comment. FEMA, the Public Assistant Grant, put up, put out an application in reference to the COVID-19. There is a resolution on the agenda tonight to be approved. We don't know the specific as of right now. They just put the application out last week. I submitted it, and we're just gonna wait for them to get back to us to see exactly what kind of details they would need from us. I am keeping a log of all the expenditures that we have incurred in reference to the COVID-19. And there was, most likely will refund seventy-five percent of the cost. But again, this is just preliminary. This would take a while before they have a final decision on the amount that they will be reimbursing. This concludes my report.
Damaris, this is James. I have a question, if Laura, you don't mind me asking. Uh, Damaris, do you, you said you're keeping track of the expenditures or expenses related to COVID-19. Do you have an estimate so far of what that number or figure might look like?
As of Friday, it was approximately six thousand dollars.
Understood. Alright, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, it is time for the public session, the first public comment section. If you guys see your, the chat window in the upper right-hand corner, if you click on chat, you'll see that we've asked you to type in your name and address to make a public comment. And I see Mr. David Holner has already done so, so thank you, Mr. Holner. You can unmute and go ahead with your question.
Thank you very much. First of all, I just wanna give our thanks to the teachers and the administration. It's four weeks in, it's going off very well. Do have a question. I have a child in both the middle and, and elementary. And the middle school student, she has teachers who are scheduling assignments due at one, two o'clock in the afternoon, some at three, some at midnight. Is there gonna be a way for consistency? Today, she was very nervous and submitted a half-completed assignment just so it was in by two o'clock because a meet ran over the allotted time. So I told her to unsubmit that and complete the assignment and write the teacher a note. I was wondering if there's gonna be some sort of guidance or a way forward for that.
This is Dr. Cullis. Thank you for making us aware. If those situations come up, I appreciate if you can shoot, you know, one of the, either the principal a meeting or a teacher the meeting because they may not realize that that's the case. So I will talk with Mr. Corman and make sure that we are consistent with our assignments being due, just like we have a homework policy where if it's not posted by a certain time, it's not due the next day. I will talk to Mr. Corman, and we can put out, when we give our message on Thursday about what April twentieth will look like that week, we'll make sure to have a consistent message about when assignments are due. Thank you for letting me know.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other public comments at this table? We're just gonna give them a minute. I know that some people are having some difficulty, so, and I think Damaris may have left the meeting for a minute. Oh, no, you're back, Damaris?
I apologize.
No, you're fine. I, I didn't note the time when we, um-
Seven, seven fifty-four, we opened.
Okay.
And seven fifty-six, we closed.
Okay. I don't see any other messages in chat, and I don't see too many other people on here. So there will be another public comment section toward the end of the meeting. Um, moving on to old business, no action to be taken. Mr. Kim, would you mind moving us through that?
Sure, I'll be happy to. During our next meeting, we will be voting on a couple of reports. In Section A, it looks like we'll be voting on the treasurer's school monies and the board secretary reports. And Section B, you'll see the student enrollment for March as well as the health office report on March and HIV case VV one nine two zero dash zero nine. And finally, we'll be voting on the minutes for, uh, for the meetings in March, working, work session, regular session.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Are there any comments about that? Okay, we're gonna move on to new business, action to be taken. Mr. Anderson, would you mind moving us through personnel, please?
No problem, yeah. If there are no objections, I'd like to move under Item A, Personnel. Items one, two, and three as a block. They include new hires, resignation, retirement, extra pay, salary adjustments, as well as some additional substitutes, as well as a employee for a leave of absence.
I'll second.
Mr. Kim?
Sorry, I did something to my computer. Um, any questions, discussion, comments? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
And now we move on to instruction and program. Mrs. Gould, would you mind moving us through that, please?
Sure. If there are no objections, I'd like to move Items one and two, well, one to be voted on. These are for two Valley View Middle School field trips in May for Medieval Times and Bronx Zoo, and I hope that they get to go on them. And there are, at this time, no workshops and expenses to be included in the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Capello?
Hello?
I had a question. Um, we have a timeline on these two to cancel if we're not able to, you know, able to take the trips, especially the New York one. They're in very- Yeah, the timeline's towards the end of the month. We'll make the decisions, we'll make the decision so nobody loses any money. Okay.
Any other questions? Want to?
I have a question about the, about other workshops that have been previously approved but have not been attended yet. Uh, will, are these workshops going to be taking place virtually, or are we looking at doing that, or are we looking at having to get refunds for those as well?
So the one workshop that we have not, that they haven't attended yet is our second grade phonics, and Teachers College is gonna run that virtually. They've actually been running their institutes through March, which we did have two of our teachers attend virtually, and it was great. So we are going to still attend the Phonics Institute, uh, April twenty-ninth, May first and second. And we did have a number of staff that were approved for and accepted into the summer institutes. So depending where we are with this, it will go on as planned virtually. And then we'll, we'll see if they get into the August ones or not. We'll, we'll have to wait and see if we're back in business at that time. But as far as any other workshops, everything has gone on as scheduled. Nothing has been canceled, and then we're just not approving any additional workshops at this time.
Thank you.
I had another question on the, on these two trips. What happens to, to the kids whose parents say, "I don't want my child going on the class trip"? Spend the day in the library? They stay home? Well, it depends on how many kids there are. Typically, they'll have to make, they make other arrangements for the kids in class. If they come to school, last year, the kids who didn't go on the eighth-grade trip, most of them didn't come to school. But if they come to school, there'll be some other activities for them. Okay. Got it.
Was there another question? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes. Okay, so we have no policy, is that right? We have no policy revisions? Nope. Um, so we are moving on to finance. Mr. Kim, would you mind moving us through finance, please?
I'll be happy to. First of all, Damaris, there is no Section One, I see, or no first resolution for checks. So I'll skip down to two. The board, be it resolved, we are going to vote on the agreement for evaluation alcohol and drug testing services with the Practice Associates Medical Group in PA at the rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per drug screen evaluation and fifteen dollars per breath alcohol test. We'll be voting on the shared service agreement for, between Morris Hills Regional District and the Denville BOE for the lunches at Lakeview Elementary School for the twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one school year. We, uh, there is a submission of a twenty-twenty safety grant through the NJ Schools Insurance Groups, Eric West, and we're voting to accept the grant for the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars for the period of July first, twenty-twenty through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. The major resolution here, which has to do with Assembly Bill thirty-nine oh two regarding the delay in transmission of quarterly property tax revenue to the school district, whereas Assembly Bill thirty-nine oh two, currently pending in the state legislature, would authorize the Department of Community Affairs to permit municipalities to delay the quarterly transmission of property tax revenues to school districts during gubernatorial declared emergencies. And whereas New Jersey public schools are highly dependent on property tax revenue to support education programs, and whereas on average, local property taxes constitute close to sixty percent of public school revenue, with the percentage even greater in a significant number of districts, ninety percent in Denville. And whereas a delay in payments from municipalities will result in a financial crisis for school districts, seriously disrupting the educational process and possibly bringing it to a halt. And whereas although public school buildings are closed during the current health emergency, the education of our students is taking place through remote learning and home instruction, and whereas continued timely transmission of school property taxes is critical for the education process to continue without interruption, and whereas as currently written, A thirty-nine oh two, which is intended to ease a financial burden on municipalities, would place a severe strain on school districts and the schools and the families that they serve. And whereas the Denville Board of Education recognizes the impact of the current public health emergency on the state and local governments as well as local school districts, but believes this legislation could worsen the situation for our communities. And therefore, be it resolved that the Denville Board of Education urges the state senate and the governor to oppose A thirty-nine oh two or amend as follows. Number one, to allow reserve funds to be utilized across fiscal years without penalty and allow for reserve funds to be fully replenished without current restrictions. Number two, the state should take responsibility for interest accrued if loans are required to continue operating the district. And number three, incorporate the attached amendment to Assembly thirty-nine oh two, thirty-nine oh two proposed by Senator Sweeney. But be it further resolved that this resolution be delivered to Governor Phil Murphy, State Senate President Stephen M. Sweeney, Assembly Speaker Craig Coughlin, and the twenty-fifth Legislative District's representative in the state senate and general assembly. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to the New Jersey School Boards Associations, Reference one dash four. And finally, as Damaris mentioned, we will be looking to approve the submission of the FEMA Public Assistant Grants application in relation to Project sixteen fifty-seven, Grant forty-four eighty-eight Coronavirus COVID Pandemic.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass, and thank you, Mr. Kim, for reading that lengthy but very important resolution. I'm sure there's some comments, questions?
Hey, Laura, it's Mike. Go ahead, Dave, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to, didn't mean to walk all over you. I've got a question about the FEMA, the number six, the FEMA Public Assistance Grant. What, I understand that we are keeping, that Damaris said earlier that we are keeping track of all of the expenditures. What expenditures are eligible for this grant and what are, what, if any, costs are associated with applying for it?
Uh, the public assistant have not given specific instructions. They, at this time, we just submitted the application just to have a project number. I don't have all, all the details at this time, so I will have to get back to you once they give us more guidance. They just wanna see how many districts will be applying for this grant.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mike, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, thanks, Laura. So, uh, two things I wanted to just bring up in the finance section here, and, um, two important things to note. I think, um, number one is item number three, which I know we've had some conversations with during our meetings, but I think it, it's important to kind of bring up again, is just, um, for the public, the fact that, uh, the reason why we are entering this shared service agreement for lunches at Lakeview is based upon a requirement of ours. And I know we've said before that, um, based upon the percentage of students, and keep me honest, Damaris and Steve, the percentage of students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch, we are required to provide lunch through a qualified vendor or company. Obviously, we're able to work pretty well with the Morris Hills Regional, so just wanted to kind of point that out. But more importantly, or just as important, I should say, wanted to bring up a little bit of a conversation about the amendment, uh, number five, the amendment that we are requesting for Bill eighty, A three, Assembly Bill thirty-nine oh two. So, you know, I think there's been a lot of conversation. Oh, Laura and I have spoken, Dino and I have spoken about this. This is obviously a big deal to us, and I- This is obviously a big deal to us. And I know the Assembly moved very quickly to approve this bill, understandably so based upon the current economic situation in the, in the state with the COVID virus going on and the social distancing and the governor's order. However, the, as we've said, the unintended consequence has the possibility that if this is executed, the delay in payments would, could potentially cause us to be unable to continue educating our students, even virtually, because we won't be able to pay our staff. So I appreciate Laura's hard work, Steve's hard work on, on getting the information here, and also speaking to our legislators in the 25th Legislative District, as well as across the state. I know I've been advocating this even with the Fair Funding Action Committee, although it's not a fair funding issue. It's certainly an important issue for a lot of school districts. So I think it's really, really important. I'm really hopeful that this amendment goes through the senate and then goes back to the Assembly. Because like I said, this will allow us to continue to educate our students, which in this current environment is absolutely critical. It's interesting just to note that in the same session on the Assembly, the last one I believe they did in person, in addition to this bill that they approved unanimously, they also approved the virtual learning bill, which requires us to pay all staff if we are doing virtual learning. So it's, to me, a little bit of a contradictory statements when you're requiring us to pay all of our staff, but then you're actually giving us the possibility of being able to pay no one. So hopefully, this will go through. Appreciate the support of a couple of different people. I know, I believe, Laura, I'm not sure if you're going to mention just the email from Steve earlier from the union, but also I know there's been a lot of support from a lot of different organizations, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into putting this together.
Thanks, Mike. I have some comments, but Dino, I see your mic is off. Did you want to say something? No, I apologize if not.
Now, if, all I wanted to say was, it's just a tag off of what Mike said, is, you know, thank you, you and Steve, for all the hard work putting this together and driving this to the fore. It's obviously super important for us. I was able to have some communication with other board members in other school districts in the 25th. They're also equally as concerned. They rallied their board members to advocate and to contact legislators as well. So I think we have a good unified message. I think this particular amendment is a good one. It's, we're not asking them to just not do this at all. I don't think that was probably a winning solution, because I think the political wins favor them doing something. But I think what we're proposing through this amendment and through this resolution, I think, is hopefully a pretty good real world fix. So, I mean, I think it's important and I'm glad we're doing it.
Thank you. Anybody else? I just want to say thank you to Mike, Dino, Steve, Damaris for putting together our concerns and our ask. And as we were, as they were kind of constructing this, that's when Senator Sweeney's amendment came out. And so I think it's important that in the resolution that we highlight those three items that we need as a district to function. I appreciate, Mike, you also mentioning that the Assembly passed another bill requiring us to pay all staff. And I just wanted to clarify for the public that there are, while most of our staff is working, there are some staff members that might not be working. So that's what the other bill was addressing, was that all staff now had to be paid regardless of their working status. Here in Denville, we don't have many employees who are not working, but it doesn't require us to differentiate if the bill should pass. Payroll, the entire, in its entirety, would have to be met. I did have the chance to speak with Senator Buco last week, and while he, he said that, number one, they would be voting on this, he believed, virtually this coming Thursday. And that he felt that Senator Sweeney made some good points and that he thought that he would be supporting it, but he had yet to go through it in detail. I also spoke with Assemblyman Bergen, who, it's already passed the Assembly, but should the amendment go through on the senate floor, the bill would need to return to the Assembly to approve the amendment. And Assemblyman Bergen assured me that he would, he would vote to support the amendment as well. This is just, again, allowing us to operate the district, and I think that it's important for the public. I think the board members have been trying to bring it out to their attention, so there's still time. Please post in the comments here when you can, contact your senator. And if you work in another district as an educator, I would ask you to contact that senator as well. Are there any other comments about finance? Okay, I don't think so. So let's do a roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
So we finished finance, and now we are on to Good of the Cause. Committee reports, correspondences.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Wagner, we have under operations.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I got it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Don.
That was a test. Make sure everybody was listening, right? Okay, under operations, there's nothing for transportation. Buildings are grounded. We have two items. Item 2.1, that the board approved, the quote number 123019-4657-00, from altitude unlimited to perform a live heat map and Wi-Fi model assessment services at the Riverview Annex project in the amount of $3,150. Item 2.2, that the board approved GF Masonry LLC to replace the retaining wall at Valley View for a cost of $21,300.
Second.
I think that was Mr. Kim?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you for correcting me on the agenda there. Comments? Questions?
I got a question about the repairing the retaining wall. I seem to recall that we were, in the information we received on Friday, that we were looking for additional bids. Is that incorrect? Or have we decided that this is the, this is the bid we want to go with? Or is, or do all the other bids come in higher?
We got, we got three quotes, and this is the best one. Did you hear that?
I think Dave accidentally left the meeting, perhaps.
Sorry, it closed instead of, instead of turning off the mic. Sorry, what was that, Steve?
So, Dave, we, we received three quotes, and that's the best quote from a reliable contractor who did the job in the Valley View gym.
Thank you.
I think it's also worth noting that that quote is approximately half, am I right, Steve? About half of what the estimate came in at?
Yes. The, the original bids from when we put the project out to bid was $45,000. So it's even less than half of what they bid.
That's great. Anybody else? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Okay. See, I shouldn't print on front and back at home, because I just messed myself all up. I think now we are on to Good of the Cause. Is that right? Committee report?
Mrs. Wagner, there's no, there's one item under no action, if anybody wanted to talk about it.
We have a new business item.
No action.
Oh, yep, back to finance that. Yes, thank you. Kim, would you mind reviewing that?
I'll be happy to. So during our next meeting, we will be voting on the budget that you find in Section A, number one, and all the other resolutions that are listed below it.
I just want to say to the public that the Finance Committee, as well as the Administration, has been working hard to look at all the different possibilities that the district will be facing, considering the pandemic that's going on and the upcoming budget. And I know that they looked at everything. This is the, the best budget that they can come up with for the district. So thank you to the Finance Committee, as well as the Administration.
No problem. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything about the budget?
Laura, I would just add that school boards, there was a podcast on Friday that they did, and an advisory, just saying that, you know, their general advice is obviously, there are a lot of unknowns going into the next year. But they strongly advised for administrations and boards to come up with a few different kind of scenarios, you know, an A scenario, a B scenario, a worst case scenario, in terms of what your, you know, what aid might look like, and what the budget might look like going into next year. Because there are so many moving parts here. So while we can't necessarily, I think, make too many changes to what we have at this point, because we don't know a lot, and I, and I know the Administration's been doing this, is we really do need to look seriously and have some contingency plans. And I know they're already working on that, but I think for the public's benefit, we, you know, just, I always wanted to repeat that and let them know that that is obviously occurring.
Thank you, Dino. It is worth repeating, and I think it, it's important for the public to understand that this is the budget, they, you know, the budget has to be set now for the upcoming school year. And that budget is based on funds that we have been promised from the state through aid and the tax levy. So it's difficult to plan in this type of situation. So right now, there's nothing that has been cut from the proposed budget going to, forward to this budget. But should we receive notification that our aid will be drastically cut or other changes that we can't even think about right now, there might be some changes to the plans going forward. So I think the public just needs to kind of be aware of that and understand that it's a fluid situation. I think it's also important to mention that the two large projects, and Damaris and Steve, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the two large projects that we're taking on this year, the Riverview Annex, as well as the Valley View Fields, are not funded through our operating budget, which was the funds that we're discussing here. And the funding, if aid were cut, would be affecting our operating budget. The resource that we have is what is funding the two main projects. So that's why they're going forward, our planned current.
I think the most important thing to mention when it comes to that is that the personnel required to open up the Riverview Annex is the recurring cost. Those would be impacted and could be impacted dramatically, depending on how much, how much the budget, how much our aid is cut. We are relying right now on an additional $258,000 promised to us through Senate 2 that was passed in 2018. And that is toward the School Funding Reform Act. So if we were not to receive the additional $258,000, there would be cuts that would have to be made. And it would most likely have to be some personnel, additional personnel, new personnel would have to be cut.
And just to reiterate what Dr. Forte is saying, and to be very clear with the public, that, as he said, new personnel, not affecting current personnel, but additional personnel that the Administration is looking to hire for the upcoming school year. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. Not, not current personnel, additional personnel that we need to operate the Riverview Annex and for some class size reduction that we've been speaking about for a while.
Hey Laura, it's Mike. Can I just ask a question or make a comment, I guess? Because I, I think, I think it's important to mention that we have no idea what the state is going to do with the aid that we're going to get. And, well, I know, like Steve, you mentioned the $258,000, but it could be more or less. We have no idea. I mean, that's just what that S2 got us to try to be, even to get our fair funding across that formula. It could be more than that, that the state cuts. It could be zero. We just don't know, and we're just guessing right now, which, you know, it's certainly good, like Dino had said, the suggestion from school boards, I think, on looking at the different scenarios. But, you know, in addition to that $258,000, there's a other state aid that we currently get that could also be affected. So at this point, we really, really just don't know what we're going to get from the state. We can control what we get from the taxpayers. And, you know, it's a, it's a little bit between a rock and a hard place we're between, because this is a year that there's not a lot of wiggle room in our budget based upon the fact that we have to go to add Riverview Annex, which adds operating costs. And Damaris and Steve have done a great job figuring out room to be able to do that within the constraints of our budget. But I just wanted to make sure we point out, it's, it could be more or less than that $258,000. We have no idea what the state could potentially do here.
Hey, thank you, Mike. I think those are good points to bring up. So I know we said it a number of times, and a number of people have hit on it, but we're just trying to be as transparent as possible with the public. So I think, just to summarize, the two biggest points are, number one, the state nor the Board of Education has any idea what type of funding we're going to be receiving from the state next year. And that could make what we're planning right now, we could change drastically. And number two, that we are currently going ahead with projects because that does not come from our operating budget. Those costs have come from reserves. So I think those are the two big points to make and to keep asking questions, should you have any. Does anybody have anything else? Committee reports, correspondence, any other discussion items?
This is James. So Dave and I had a great conversation the other day, and one of his suggestions was, just like fire drills, just like any other kind of drills, can we in the future plan for more frequent remote learning? Because this is a, a process that I believe may, we may need to revisit in the future. You know, maybe, hopefully not this year, obviously, but for future years. And so I know that there's a lot of regulations or restrictions on whether or not we can do remote learning. But this, this process that is being developed seems to be a very important process that we almost should look to hone and to perfect, so that in the future, we have this in our back pocket. And if we ever do come across a snow day, you know, say next year, can we use it? Can we have a virtual learning day or a, the term that you use, Steve, which is escaping me right now? So, but, you know, this almost seems like a process that we should continue in future years.
I'm pretty certain that the Department of Education is going to require that all districts submit a plan. They used to require that around the time of the bird flu, H1N1, SARS, and then kind of stopped doing it. I would pretty much assume that this is going to be part of our lives forever to have some type of a plan. Whether or not we can practice it live and count it as a school day, probably not. But we could, we certainly will have to plan it, and I think your point's well taken. We will be doing that.
Thank you.
Hey Laura, can I make my quick comment?
Yeah.
So two, two quick things. Number one, So two, two quick things. Number one, just kind of adding on to James's comment. I've been really impressed, it's been clear to me with my three kids doing flexible learning, that a lot of the tools have been used in the classroom prior to this event. The, the kids were, my kids were much more comfortable with Google Classroom, Google Docs, all sorts of stuff on the computers from a classroom perspective than I was by far. They were teaching me how to find things or how to go in and look at things. So, so kudos to the staff and Dr. Colas, Dr. Forte and, and the entire staff on, on getting them ready in one way, shape or form prior to this, not knowing this was ever going to happen. So I, I was really impressed with that. The other comment is completely different, different subject altogether and not, although not directly related to the board, I just wanted to bring it up as a, a good of the cause item. So a little bit, you know, I don't want to say selfish, but, so we've been, a, a couple of us have been forming a group in town called Denville Strong to support our local businesses and our frontline workers, most importantly, whether it's our, our first aid responders or first responders, police, fire, first aid in Denville, as well as nurses and staff at St. Clair's and Morristown Medical. So just as a kind of a, a little bit of a selfish plug, the, the fund has raised almost $22,000 and we've supplied meals, supplied equipment they were looking for at the hospital. So anybody who's interested can go on Facebook or shoot me an email at denvillesstrong@gmail.com. It's amazing this community comes together. A lot of those individuals are, are part of the school district and I appreciate the support from them. So I just wanted to kind of put it out there that it's amazing how this community comes together, both in a learning perspective, but also about the community awareness. And I've heard a lot of parents talking to their kids about, hey, what can we do? That's a positive thing right now. So it's, it's great to be able to see all that going on in our community when there's such difficult times going on now.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you for putting that together. I know that you spearheaded it and have had a lot of community support. And I think it's great. I should also mention that I've seen so many students in the, throughout the district, doing different kinds of things that, that kids can participate in. Making cards for either people that are sick or people that are in nursing homes who can't visit with their family right now. So I, I just want to echo the sentiments that I love our community and even the, the students outside of school are getting involved and, and supporting the community. Are there any other comments, questions?
I got a question for Damaris, a point of water. I'd like to change my vote on the field trips to no.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Changes are noted?
Thank you.
And we alluded to it and then I forgot to mention it before, but we did receive a letter. You know, correct me if I'm wrong, we received a letter today from the Presidents of the Denville Education Association in support of the President, Senate President Sweeney's amendment to the bill. And they put it out to us that they had spoken with their NJEA representatives and were fully supporting the bill as well, or the amendment to the bill as well.
Yep, that's correct. We received that today. That was, that was certainly a, a nice gesture on their part. And it's, you know, certainly we're all, we're all pulling with the same order. We're interested in us being able to pay them as, as we are.
Yes, absolutely. So it's good that we are all on the same page. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, so this time we're going to open up the meeting for our second public comment section. It is twenty thirty four is what I have, Damaris. So I noted in the chat box in the upper right hand corner, you can click on that for members of the public to just type in your name and address if you'd like to make a comment or have a question and then go ahead and unmute yourself. We're just going to give you guys a minute in case anybody has a comment. And now my clock says, I'm twenty thirty five, or eight thirty five PM, so I don't see any comments. So we're going to close the public session. Number two, it's eight thirty five. And we do have need, right Steve, for an executive session?
We do. We'll close this. What we'll do is we'll go into executive, we'll close out of this Google Hangout. And I forwarded the call number for you to make the private call.
Okay.
We're not going to be voting on anything after. We're not going to be voting on anything after.
So just for members of the public, we're not going to close the meeting because we need to go into executive session. But when we come out of executive session, there will be no voting to come back to. So we're going to, for virtual technical issues, we're going to close down this Google Meet and continue with our executive session via telephone.
But we have to move to go into executive session here on Google Meets, right?
Yes. So would you like to care about that for us, Mr. Kim?
Sure. I motioned that we convene in executive session in accordance with Section Eight of the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss
Legal.
Legal.
Legal matters.
Legal issues. Minutes of the sessions will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second. Damaris, I heard three people.
I only heard me and Dino, so I, I don't think it matters. Whoever, whoever wants it.
Doesn't matter. Do we, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, yes.
Hi.
Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Nope, we are in executive session at twenty thirty seven and I'll see you guys on the call.
Where's the link for the call?
It should be emailed to you, Don.
I'm going to email now. I don't, I don't see it. Time was an email.
It was emailed today, Don. It wasn't, it's not a link. It's, it's the code.
It was emailed at one oh seven, Don. It's called April sixth meeting from Steve.
And we're going to have to dial into it. We're not going to be doing it through the computer.
Okay, I, I got it. Yeah, I, I had that one. Okay, I'll call right now.
Okay, thank you. And so you're making sure that everybody gets off of this.
Thank you very much, all the members of the public who, who showed up.